Allegiance, please remain standing following the Pledge of Allegiance. We will have a silent moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will have the reading of the notice, please.
An adjourned organizational meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of 38 members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse Assembly Room, 500 Forest Street, Wausau, on Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., to consider the following matters. The agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you. I'd like to request everyone, please silence their cellphones and any other electronic devices as to not be an interruption to the meeting, and thank you in accordance. And we'll move on to roll call. I'd ask everyone, please sign in. And thank you. I'd like to welcome all of the visitors that we have with us this evening, and also the viewing audience, and thank you for your interest in county government. And we will move on to education presentations and/or reports. And the first item is Standing Committee Chairpersons or Designees. Any reports by standing chairpersons or their designees? Okay, we will move on then to Consent Agenda, Items C8 through C12A. What is your pleasure? And we have a motion by Supervisor Drabek and a second by Supervisor Cavelli to approve the Consent Agenda items, Items C8 through Items C12A. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Supervisor Shafinsky, how do you vote? Could you please let me know?
Yes.
He's online. Supervisor Shafinsky, waiting for your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Okay.
And we will proceed. And the motion is unanimous. Thank you. And we'll move on to Item D, Appointments, the ADRCC CW Advisory Committee.
Appointing Q. Herr, 9848 Siberian Drive Weston, to the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Central Wisconsin Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cavelli and a second by Supervisor Leahy. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to vote.
Chair Gibbs, I vote yes.
Thank you, Supervisor. And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. We have to going to Item E, Human Resources Finance and Property Committee Resolutions. Resolution establishing the 2024 Budget Priorities and Guidelines, Resolution 28-23. What is your pleasure? Motion by Seifelt, second by Supervisor Leahy. Any discussion? Supervisor Baker.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. So I have watched quite a few of the presentations by the in the Standing Committees, and I submitted a number of questions to the budget presentation. And I have a couple comments from that, and I just sent a slide if we could show that on the screen. One of the items that I noticed that were presented by quite a few people was that they would like to specify a level of total tax levy, including the debt levy, and I think that has some merit in that if we don't specify that, if the board does not give guidance on that, then it's likely that we're going to come back with a budget that exceeds what many people would be comfortable for a tax levy increase. And at that point, it'll be a month before the budgets do, or a few weeks, and we'll be in the same situation as last year, so where people are trying to come up with ways to save money at the last minute, and they're not well thought out, and, you know, just don't have time to get all the information. So I would propose that we actually have a discussion and provide a proposed tax levy, total tax levy increase. The second question that I, or the question, the second topic that I want to discuss is is total debt by the county. So I had to ask for a slide of total outstanding debt over the last 20 years, and that information was not provided, so I put that together over the last week. All of the information was on the county's website in the audited statements. Can I get that, can I get that on the screen? I just, did you just get an email from me?
We're working on trying to provide that, Supervisor. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I've had some difficulty with PDF files being corrupted when I forward them. Is, does it, were you able to open it or no? So I just, so we, in the interest of time, I have put together three slides. The first slide shows the outstanding debt from the last 20 years by year, and that's just primary government debt, which is defined, I'm not sure how that's defined, but that's in the, in the financial statements. So you can see, starting back from 2003 up to 2008, we had no primary general obligation debt. And then presumably during the Great Recession, so as it was labeled, we took on some debt and we got that paid down by 2017, I believe it was. And then over the last four years, our total county GO debt, general obligation debt, has increased dramatically, up to in around $80 to $90 million. I couldn't find that, that last year, I didn't find the exact number. But then the next slide shows the primary debt plus the component units. And in the financial statements, the component units are defined as North Central Healthcare and the Central Wisconsin Airport and some other smaller items. So this shows a similar trend, but there is more stable component debt, but it still was roughly under $20 million for a long period of time, and then like the last 15 years, and then again, general increases, substantial increases in the last four years. And then the next slide shows projections going forward, and that shows our debt going up to basically $200 million. And that's based off of an infrastructure presentation I've got on the slide, the date, and also the West Side Master Plan presentation. So I think that is something we should be, you know, fully aware of and have it discussed and make a decision as a board if that's the kind of, if we really want to proceed with spending, with borrowing that much money. And we do have, in the ordinance, 1.51 parent five, we have a self-imposed debt limit, which is shown as that red line. And can you go back to the second slide, please? So we, we are in excess of that. It is a self-imposed debt. It's not mandatory. We could choose to change that, but that is, you know, something that in the past our county board has chosen to adopt, and, you know, I think we should either change that or respect that, one or the other. So in all, we haven't, I found a number of different changes and priorities that I think we should add, and I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution, if that's in order at this time.
The motion to amend would be in order.
So I have, I've printed 45 copies of the proposed resolution. Can I hand those out?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Would it be appropriate for the clerk to read the changes, or would you like me to do that?
Yeah, I'll have this clerk read the changes. Just the changes. I'll have the clerk read the proposed changes in the motion. The, I'm assuming Supervisor Baker, is that's correct? The red line version is the changes that you are proposing?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, I'll have the clerk read those changes.
All right, in the fifth whereas, the last line, and prioritizes a stable, sustainable total tax levy and, and then add to whereas, whereas during the 2023 budget process, the Marathon County Board of Supervisors and the county administrator indicated a commitment to further review nonprofit funding, and whereas Marathon County's Debt Management Policy, Section 1.51 parent five, states utilizing the county's debt capacity will only be considered after all of the financing options have been exhausted. And then in the now therefore be it resolved, number two, employee compensation proposed budget should be based on a maximum 3% increase in employee compensation. Number five, add on the last to reduce costs and limit the increase in total tax levy to the increase in net new construction. Number six, Standing Committee's proposed budget should equally consider all Standing Committee recommendations on programs and services. Number seven, nonprofit funding proposed budget should include a plan to convert nonprofit funding to a true fee-for-service basis, utilize requests for proposals for desired services rather than issue sole source contracts, and provide an estimate of cost savings versus directly providing the services. Number eight, debt use per county debt management policy and in light of the recent rapid increase in county debt, the proposed budget should consider utilizing 8 million to 10 million of ARPA funds to extend the life of the current Highway Department facilities on West Street. Be it further resolved, adding a phrase, 2023 mandated and discretionary services report the rates and fees document and the five-year departmental expense and levy document during the ensuing months.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment? Second by Supervisor Marash. Any discussion?
Chair Gibbs?
Go ahead. Who is that speaking, please?
This is Supervisor Shafinsky, so I'd like to place myself in turn, please.
Okay, I will, I will lock into the queue. Supervisor Cavelli first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the proposal on the amendment changes, and looking at the data that Supervisor Baker provided, and pointing out the fact that we have a self-imposed debt limit of $60 million proposed by previous board members, I think this resolution helps keep that in check, and I think there are, the changes in here make a lot of sense to me. I'll be in favor of this. Thank you.
Supervisor Robinson.
8:13 on a Tuesday evening, we get an amendment that significantly alters the budget priorities that were developed and discussed at a committee level, at the county board level, and now we're here for action, and we get something coming out of nowhere. This resolution or the amendments are fraught with problems. Number one, if you buy into the limitation and going with the policy relative to debt, we won't be borrowing for years. We won't be able to support other capital projects that are critical. One of the reasons why the debt went up in the county is that we had delayed projects, library roofs, county jail replacements, and there was a need to do borrowing. Another significant expenditure was the expansion of and upgrades to North Central Healthcare facilities. Over $70 million of debt associated with that, necessary to bring that facility up and into modern times, for lack of better terms, to realize some efficiencies. Unfortunately, the pandemic created problems. If you tie our net tax levy increase to net new construction, are you factoring in what special education does? Are you special factoring in what the library does? Are you factoring in bridge and culvert aids? Will you be limiting if we, if we get a rash of new bridge requests and culvert aid requests, will you be penalizing operations of county government at the expense of those projects that may not benefit us because they are part of the levy and we cost share in those? I think that this, there may be components of this that are, that are worthwhile studying. We have tasks, we have met with all of the committees relative to the nonprofits. The Public Safety Committee has brought in the nonprofits under its jurisdiction and asked them for presentations. We have encouraged other committees to do so. That is the appropriate way to do so. But to bring this in at 8:13 without attending the other meetings and vetting it and discussing the consequences of it will have some significant impacts upon our ability to govern and to go forward. If we, if we live by these provisions, you won't be borrowing for a long period of time. The policy relative to debt is contained in, in 1.51 policies, and it is sub five dealing with debt limits and capacities, and the increase in, it allows for increases in debt, and increased use of debt shall not negatively impact the county's credit rating. If this higher debt capacity is used by the county, the county board will give consideration to holding sufficient reserves in the general fund to cover at least one year's debt service requirement. That's in the policy that we're looking at. I think there are protections in there. In order to issue debt, it takes a three-quarters vote of this county board, of all members, whether they're present or not. I think that there are protections in there that can let us control our debt going forward. We don't need resolutions like this coming at the 11th hour, imposing undruly draconian limits upon the county to do its business. That's how we got into the situation we are with needing to do some of the borrowing. We ought not go back there.
Supervisor Longenhahn.
Oh, thank you, Mr.
Excuse me, I apologize. Supervisor Shafinsky was next in line.
Yeah, I won't cut in.
Okay. Supervisor Shafinsky.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. First of all, to make it perfectly clear, I think that Supervisor Baker, albeit this may be coming in a bit late, we have had numerous discussions about the fact that we are supposed to be a policy-setting board. Part of policy-setting is what are the limitations that we are going to be setting upon ourselves in terms of spending? Not only do we set those limits, or should set those limits, we have not in the past. We owe it to administrate, the administration, and to the employees of the county to give them policy direction. Otherwise, what we're doing and what we've seen is the past, is everybody puts together by department, by committee, they put their wish list together. And I'm not saying that they're being frivolous. I'm not saying they're necessarily thinking that they're trying to be extravagant, but they're putting together something of a wish list. Here are the things, here are the priorities, as they see them from within county government, and everybody wants, you know, their projects to rise to the top and to be funded, because of course, we all have a lot of pride, and, and everybody that works for the county, all the county employees have a lot of pride, and rightfully so, in the jobs that they do. You know, they want to do the best they can. However, as a board, we owe it to them to give them direction as to what is the overall limit going to be. So first of all, I think that this amendment does that. It provides the policy guidance that has been sorely lacking over the last, you know, number of years. Relative to debt, we have seen debt skyrocket, if you want to put it that way. I mean, it has gone up significantly. Is some of that in regard to issues that have been outside of our control relative to the pandemic, perhaps? Has some of it been due to the fact that maybe we made poor or less than optimal choices in the past about when to tackle a project, and thereby, you know, we put it off too long, and thereby, a, I'll make up a number, a $5 million project ballooned to a $15 or $20 million project, perhaps? However, given the rate of increase in spending and the rate of increase in borrowing that we are seeing, and the fact that there are supervisors who feel that we can double or triple or quadruple our debt going forward, provides absolutely no limitation. We've heard, well, what about this project? What about that project? What about culverts? What about bridges? What about, what about, what about? They're all excellent projects, and those are good points. However, I'm going to say, what about the taxpayers of Marathon County? We owe it to them, especially at this point in time, when they are more than ever, they are living paycheck to paycheck, to put some real brakes on the growth. And in fact, a 3% growth or holding growth to net new construction would be the prudent thing to do in the current economic climate. Does that imply that we can't do things that we would otherwise like to do? Yes, it does. But like every family out here in, in our county, they're all making choices about what they can and cannot afford to do based on their current economic conditions. It behooves us as a board to act responsibly and to make those same hard choices and say, we would love to build a new Highway Department building, but now is not the time. First, we need to bring down the existing debt and pay it down to a reasonable level. Then we can perhaps come back, and it might be two years, it might be five years, it might be 10 years, but then we come back and look at perhaps taking on more debt to build a new Highway Department, or whatever the project might be. I'm not picking on the Highway Department, I'm just using them as an example. So I absolutely support this amendment, and we'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Supervisor Longenhahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The funny thing is, is that I don't disagree with anything that's been said thus far tonight in the discussions, and there's a good lot of these provisions that have been added as part of the amendment that I don't necessarily disagree with either. With that being said, I think we're overlooking a pretty easy step in this process, is in that if there's something that requires more work, which based on this feedback, it sounds like it requires more work, we simply send this back to HR Finance and incorporate these changes into their work and then bring it to the county board. So I guess my question would be to you or Corp Counsel, now that the amendment has been made, what would be the process to send this back to HR Finance?
There'd be a motion to refer or commit would be in order.
Follow-up then?
Go ahead.
Would it be germane to make that motion at the current time, given that there's amendment on the floor?
Yes, it would be germane, you would, it would be acceptable.
I would move that we refer this back to HR Finance for continued work.
Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Rosenberg. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer?
Chair Gibbs?
Just a second, just wait. We've got to get the motion to refer. So the motion to refer is preferential to the motion to amend. Okay, now we will entertain discussion on the motion to refer. Any discussion?
Chair Gibbs?
Supervisor Shafinsky.
Not so much discussion, but questions about the process. So this motion refers both the original motion and, and the amendment back to HR Finance. What actions is the committee allowed to take? What's, what is the possible choices that they have? Must they go, yes, they approve all of the amendments and fold them in? Must they deny all of them? Can they thread a needle? I'm just asking so I understand what, what the type of outcome might be, or what it might look like.
Well, the motion to refer back to the committee allows the committee to take any action it chooses on the original resolution, along with any of the suggested amendments that are being offered, and then bring forward something different or something the same back to the full board.
Thank you for the clarification.
I, first off, I welcome the opportunity to have some discussion about some of the amendments that are being offered. I don't know that they've been fully vetted. I don't know that they've been fully vetted. I mean, I agree when we look at the supervisor's debt chart, but again, understand, 70 million of that project, of that debt, is one project that of that project, of that debt, is one project that this full board overwhelmingly supported with a three-quarter majority for NCHC and that remodel. So if we were to go forward, you know, I think, and it's clear that the board can, if it chooses to exceed its self-imposed limit under the need for projects, it does so. It does so with a three-quarters majority vote. And to tie our hands, it says we can't, but again, I welcome the opportunity to refer it back to committee for discussion. I don't think we've looked at all of the options. Supervisor Baker.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. So just for a point of clarification, I don't believe that any place in the resolution it says that we can now borrow money. It says that we have a self-imposed limit, and there are methods that we can use to exceed those, as we have in the past. What the resolution says is that we should consider spending ARPA money to rehab the current highway location facilities. Is that feasible? I don't know. Is it not feasible? I don't know. We haven't looked at it. The guidance says that we should exhaust all possibilities before borrowing money. That's all I'm asking us to do. I'm not asking, I'm not saying, I don't think there's anywhere in here that's a commitment that we'll never borrow money again. I don't think you'll have a lot of trouble finding that in here, because it's not in here. Also, I would say that my view of this is, I didn't spring this at 8:15 on a Tuesday evening, rather, I listened to every standing committee discussion about the budget, with the exception of one, and I picked out things that were suggested to the leadership but were ignored. So rather than this being a springing of 8:15 of things that you've never heard before, this is things that you've heard but chose to ignore. So that, it's very disingenuous to state that this is springing this on you. So we can send it back to the HR Finance if we want. When we went through the strategic plan process, we sent things back to AAA DC three times before they finally came to the board to decide. So we can send it back to HR Finance, or we can decide tonight. Either way is fine, but you know, which, do we want to get something done, or do we want to go through multiple cycles of sending it back and up? That's up to the board deciding, not to me. Thank you.
Supervisor Boots.
I just wanted to make a comment on the six and seven standing committees. Proposed budget should equally consider all standing committees' recommendations on programs and services. And then we come back saying nonprofit funding. Per Supervisor Robinson, we have been looking at the nonprofits. I'll bring up just one instance of that, the women's community. It's not just, it's not something we can just put out an RFP for, considering all of the other things they do for us pro bono. That's why it's given to them, because they're already doing things for us at no cost. So it's not as simple as just saying, we're going to take out an RFP, because we're going to lose some of the things that people are doing for us for nothing. So we are looking at that at public safety. I just wanted to say, and we had, what, four nonprofits come forward, or three come forward at one of the meetings, talking about those things, and we are contracting through them already and utilizing money that they're getting for matching funds. So I just wanted to point that out.
Supervisor Longenhahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out that, like I said, I think it's good to raise these particular points, but if you go back and look at the schedule or the document that lays out the priorities and responsibilities up and, or for this current budget session that we're in right now, it does say that HR Finance and Property recommends the budget priorities. So I, again, I hear what the other supervisors are saying, that there has been input from all the standing committees regarding the budget process thus far, but I would feel more comfortable if it went through HR Finance and Property, and there was a discussion there, because otherwise, I think I speak for a lot of the other supervisors in this room, getting something so late in the process is very uncomfortable, and I don't feel comfortable making any sort of decisions based on something that's just put in front of me. So like I said, I respect the point that the standing committees have been having these discussions, but as far as this specific language right here, I haven't seen this before prior to, not 8:13, 8:15, friends, you know, 7:13 tonight. I have, I have not seen this. So I really do think it's worthwhile putting this back to HR Finance. That being said, if it is sent back to HR Finance, I want to make a couple of points that I'd like them to look into. The first thing is, is in item number seven with the proposed amendments, it says that utilize requests for proposals versus, for desired services rather than issue sole source contracts. I'd like to get feedback from staff on that, to see if there would be any inefficiencies created from that, because while the process itself might sound good on paper, in reality, when it's actually implemented, there could be increased costs that are created because of that. And then for item number eight, with the ARPA funds being used for highway expenditures, I just would like to ask, with that $8 to $10 million, would operating costs be wrapped into those figures? Because if you're using one-time money for operating costs, that's going to create problems for future budgets. And then the last point that I would like to make for finance review, in the last paragraph, it says in discretionary services report, the rates and fees document, the five-year departmental expense and levy document, I would also add in other necessary financial documents in the ensuing months to develop the additional recommendations for consideration. So just to get my points in for HR Finance, if they get this back to their committee and they're looking at these points, those are my thoughts as far as what needs to be reviewed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Rosenberg.
Am I understanding this correctly? The $70 million on the North Central Health Care is paid back by North Central Health Care. It's an obligation to the county, but it, that debt is scheduled to be paid from a different revenue stream than the levy. I mean, there's been a hiccup here, so it looks darker, but it isn't really, it shouldn't really be as big a concern as it might have been.
Yes, the plan, and this board has received the, you know, the proposed repayment schedule that NCHC is proposing and proposed to do and review, and they are intending to cover that debt. Now, they are working towards that, and I will, as the chair on the NCHC committee, I will say that they are making great strides towards that goal to be able to cover that debt. It is a big lift, there's no question. At the peak of the debt service, it is over $4 million a year. There's no question. But the leadership that is in place has got the eye on the prize, and that is, they totally intend to try to do everything they can within their power to be able to cover that debt. Now, they are not there at this point, and we've had to, the county has had to cover, but that's why also the debt service extends past and pays back to the county. The proposed schedule, or the schedule that you've seen that was approved, goes past the end of the debt issuance, and so it pays back the county into the reserves at that point.
Thank you.
Supervisor Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding number eight, I know that Supervisor Longenhad had made a point that there are problems with future budgets when we take operating expenses through ARPA, but we've done that in the past, all with the additional energy that we put in last time's budget. So this is not something new. We've done it before.
Supervisor Robinson.
I apologize for being ahead of my time, saying it's 8:30 when it's, sorry, 8:13 versus 7:13. We will take these recommendations seriously. I think we've heard some discussions. This is our first time through, but I think we also have to go into this eyes wide open and have a full understanding of what some of the priorities might mean as we go forward. I think we've, we heard loud and clear last year that there was a desire for watching the bottom line relative to the tax levy, which is why we applied reserves and sales tax to the debt in North Central Health Care. The problem with North Central Health Care is that they aren't able to support the debt based upon current operational performance, and therefore, the debt falls on the county. We are the guarantor of that debt, and we have to pay it. They will pass back over time, but they're not in a position right now to absorb all that date and, that debt internal to their policies. But we will give serious consideration to there. There are some, there are some things that I think everybody can agree to on here. There are some things that we would like additional clarification on, and we will give it due consideration at the committee level.
Supervisor Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my first comment, I myself would like us to get beyond the attitude that bringing up an amendment during a regular county board voting meeting is somehow lowbrow or doesn't kind of fit. This is our last opportunity to discuss, and oftentimes, people cannot make it to every committee meeting to bring up these kinds of suggestions, and cannot watch these other meetings to do that. So this is a time for us to do that, so I would hope that we would get beyond that. The second point I would like to make is regarding NCHC. At some point, the board decided to move forward with the project, but was it really clear about how much debt that we are taking on, on the county? This is not the NCHC's debt. It is our debt, and there is no guarantee, not one, that they will ever pay it. So we have to have the mindset that this is our debt, and we have to act accordingly. They haven't paid anything on it yet. They're not scheduled to pay anything on it this year. We don't know what's going to happen next year. It's our debt. You co-signed a loan, you have to be willing to step up. Thank you.
Supervisor Longenhahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of the comments that were previously made, I just want to clarify, I'm not, you know, I'm not in any way inferring that offering amendments is lowbrow. If y'all recall, I offered an amendment for the strategic plan, I think just last month. I'm not saying that, but I think common sense would tell us that there's a difference between off-rating one amendment versus a series of amendments in front of us, especially ones that were not seen by the standing committee of jurisdiction. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the question.
Question's been called. Is there any objection? Any objection? Is there a second?
I would like to object.
The objection has been made. There is a second, seconded by Supervisor Vensky. Just a second till the clerk gets up to date with where we're at. There was no one in the queue at the time. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Boots was in the queue. Supervisor Boots is good. And so, question's been called. It does require a two-thirds majority vote. And we will proceed to vote. A yes vote will end debate, and we'll proceed to vote on the motion. Supervisor Shafinsky, I'm assuming you're voting no?
You would be correct. I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried. 22 is the required vote, and two-thirds majority of 32 is 22. And so the motion is carried. Debate is ended, and we'll proceed to vote on the motion to refer to the HR Finance Committee.
Yes.
Okay, we are ready to vote. A yes vote will refer the original resolution, along with the amendments, to HR Finance to be brought back to this board.
Chair Gibbs, can I ask that the screen be changed to show the, reflect the votes?
Supervisor Shafinsky, how do you vote? We're voting on referral to the HR Finance Committee.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I will vote yes.
Okay, and we will proceed. And the motion is carried, and it is referred back to committee. Okay, we will move on to item F-15, Resolution Extending the Incumbents of the ARPA Funds for the Regional Forensic Science Center, Amending the 2023 CIP Budget Process and Authorizing the Expenditure for Design Services, Resolution R-29-23. Okay, just hold on a second. Is there any discussion? Vice Chair McEwen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to everyone. Thank you for an opportunity to make a couple more updates since we had an update at our last educational meeting. Everyone should have a copy of the updated resolution and a letter to the Joint Committee on Finance from Chairman Gibbs requesting support for this. The updates, the three, extending the incumbents of ARPA funds for Regional Forensic Science Center project, that has not changed. And as I mentioned before, the reason we're asking it to be extended from July 31, 2023 to December 31, 2023, is there's pending budgets in the state and federal government providing some funding for this project. We may not know the results of those budgets by July 31, 2023, so we're asking that to be extended. Amending the 2023 Capital Improvement Program budget, this project has been in the works for five and a half years. It is not currently in the Capital Improvement Program budget, so we're asking to have that put in to the Capital Improvement Program budget. And then also authorizing the expenditure for design services. The reason for that is, we're trying to get a design so that we can put RFPs out for the actual, to build the project, and that we would like to get out by December, January, because it's going to take approximately five to six months to do the design. So since our last meeting, the, there hasn't been, there's been a couple of things that have changed. At our last county board meeting, when I covered the tentative allocation from the state of Wisconsin legislative budget, they were considering a $10.6 million allocation for this project. And the first change deals with that. It's on the third whereas. It's red highlighted. We don't, you, everybody have that? It's on the first page, third whereas, and it starts with the funding source. Being considered by the legislative representative is the State Building Commission, which by policy requires that the project requires that the project request or agreed to secure no more, no more than, no less than 50% of the overall project cost prior to initial review by the commission. So that has changed there. If, if this moves forward and the total budget is supposed to be at 14.8 million, if we would get this funding through the building commission, it would give us 7.4 million. So that has changed. However, that does not limit us from contacting representatives at the state legislature, and Chairman Gibbs is going to cover that in part of his letter, but they're, they're going to, we're going to continue to move forward to get additional funding if we get the funding from the building commission. So that was the first change. That was an update from the first resolution that we had. The second update is on the second page, the third, or the second whereas down. The, on May 23, 2023, the Human Resource Finance Property Committee voted to amend the funding authorization to procure a design. It was $178,095 when I reported last time. We actually have a actual response received on the project, and the design cost now is at $219,368. That was another change. The last time when I reported to the committee, to the board, we were not aware of the exact cost. So that is, that's, that's the second change in, in there. If you have any questions while we're going along with the, the changes, there, there is five of them total. The, the third change deals with the amount, the $219,368,000 from the, from the $2 million ARPA funds. The actual cost, like I said, we did not have two weeks ago when I reported to the, the committee. The next change is be further resolved that the county board authorize the county board chair to contact appropriate state legislature members regarding Marathon County's commitment to the regional forensic science project, including the county's intent to work diligently to secure the funds and contributions necessary to fund the projects. Now, of that funding that we have, we have proposed budget of $2 million from congressional budget from Senator Baldwin's office and the $2 million that the county authorized. So we're not short the other 7.4. We do have the additional funding, the proposed congressional one and the $2 million from the county board. But there are ways that the task force and the staff is working to include in kind donations, things that the, the medical examiner is going to bring from her existing office that would be part of the total cost. So hopefully, you let this, you approve this resolution and continue to let the task force work to try to, to come up with the shortfalls if, if the funding goes through the State Building Commission Committee. The last, the last change is on the, the back page, the second paragraph down, just explaining the, the resolution to authorize the expenditures of $219,368 from the ARPA funds. The, there's no bonding in this. We, we are not going to bond because we had a, a business study done, and we are operational neutral without making any payments as far as a loan or a bond. So our intention is, is to continue moving forward to get this project funded through the state and the $2 million of ARPA funds and the $2 million from congressional budgeting. So at this, at this point, I'm just asking the board to continue to support this project, letting it move forward. If in December, we don't, we don't come up with the, the additional funding for it, we were probably going to have to move into another, another direction. But there is no, there's no borrowing, there's no bonding on this. We've had a lot of support, many partners. We have letters of support from medical facilities, the Medical College of Wisconsin. And like I said, it would be, it would be really, it would be a huge loss for Marathon County to turn half the, the 7.4 from the state and the 2 million from the federal. So I'm just asking you to, you know, support this resolution and support the letter that Chairman Gibbs, and he's going to explain it a little bit more, support that to be sent, sent to the Joint Committee on Finance, letting them know we're, we're interested in, in the, whether it's the 7.4. We would prefer the 10.6, but that's, like I said, we're still working on that. So are, are there any questions?
Next to Supervisor Longenhahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this would be a question for either Vice Chair McEwen or the Finance Committee Chair. Both these items were on the agenda for the HR Finance Committee meeting this afternoon. I'm assuming that they passed?
Thank you. I forgot to mention that they did pass the changes in the, the resolution this afternoon at their meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Sandalski.
I just wanted a clarification on the, so it'd be a $5.4 million shortfall according to what the, the state will through the, they will, they will supply 7.4, and then we were going to kick in the 2 million through the ARPAs. So we would be 5.4. I was just curious as to where the plan is to take that funding from as far as the, the deficit in between, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the question. There's 2 million that were still, that's still proposed from the Senate, so we'd be 3.2 or 3.4 short, correct? And like I said, there's, there's opportunities to work with these other people that have supported it. Plus, like I said, WCA's been working with the state and the federal, trying to secure more funding also. And this letter is going to give Chairman Gibbs an opportunity to talk to more of the legislators down in Madison. We possibly, I'm just throwing this out, I don't know, they have ARPA funds, the state has ARPA funds. You know, could we, could we get them to, you know, put that into where we have the difference between the 7.4 and the 10.6? But we, but we need the opportunity to try. So thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, we will proceed to vote.
Chair Gibbs, how you vote? Yes?
Thank you, Supervisor Shafinski, voting yes. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to the, let's see, announcements and/or requests do need signatures from HR Finance and, and Public Safety. Any other announcements and/or requests? Okay, we are then down to the famous motion. Item 17, what is your pleasure? Supervisor Baker had a request? Supervisor Baker is recognized, please.
Yes, I'm requesting that we get an update on the ARPA status, detailed, detailed update. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests? All right. Then we are now down to item number 17. What is your pleasure? Motion by Vice Chair McEwen and, excuse me, I got a motion by Supervisor Vensky and a second by Supervisor Cavelli to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.